Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order at six o'clock. We have everybody in attendance, so we're gonna start the meeting.
To the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everybody. First item up was meant to be a meeting agenda. We have one thing to remove from the agenda because we covered it last week. Only valuation. Discussion on the agenda. No discussion, although the agenda seems by my saying, I, I, both same. Next item up will be visitor, excuse me, opportunity for visitors to address the board. Visitors may not discuss or share any private or personal data at school meeting. Any student program or personnel concerns is first brought to the proper building administration to be resolved. Anybody you'd like to address the board? I know we got some new faces. Are you still good? Questions on electronic way too? Yes, checked out. Do you have any electronic questions? Emily, do you have any questions that came in?
No.
Thank you. Okay, I have some acknowledgements, I'm gonna put my cheaters on here, so. I have Steve five forty-eight, summer staff. We're busy all summer, thanks for your time and your work, helping your students in maintaining our facilities this summer, so we have custodial, summer rec staff, twelve bikes and summer school staff. Thanks. We'll move on, we have administrator reports. We've added Apex Engineering. First.
Thank you, everybody, is there a certain spot you want me to stand or is it here fine?
Wherever we can kind of get you on the aisle.
Right up here?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you for having me this evening. If you recall, or some of you recall, I was here earlier this summer to talk about some proposed improvements to some parking lots that are currently owned by the school, so just in summary, one area was the area by the Chauncey Martin Field, both on the north and west side of the baseball field. In the southeast quadrant, at the intersection of Chunk Highway fifty-nine and Third Avenue, there's a piece of property there that the school now owns that we had talked about. And as well as on the backside of the south and east side of the Viking Elementary School, so at that time we had proposed, presented some information on some proposed improvements, I provided some very preliminary estimated costs, and what we did at that time is decided to go out and get some geotechnical borings and report to just verify what was underneath those areas of soils, which obviously can have a big factor on what's gonna cost to make improvements to those areas. So that's what we did, we got Terracotta on board, they came out, did some geotechnical borings, we got a report from those folks, and I've gotten updated under item number three, and hopefully all of you have my outline, item number three there, I've got a preliminary opinion of cost table. Those are updated preliminary opinion of costs, so as you can see, I've got them broken down by area A, which is that area by the Chauncey Martin Field. Areas B and C are the ones in the northeast, across the street from the school, the northeast part of the school, and then area D is by the Viking Elementary School, so as you can see, the overall current estimated project cost is approximately one point four million dollars. Just for reference, I pulled up my estimated cost information early this summer, back in June was under three B. At that point, I had an estimated cost of one point three four million. Again, right now, the estimated cost based on the geotechnical information that we've got in hand is one point four million. So one thing that I want to touch on is these numbers in these tables, specifically at the table in three A includes construction, professional services, and contingencies, so at this point, we're still at a very preliminary stage in this process. I do include a substantial amount for contingencies in there, just for undeveloped design details, things like that, and please remember when we do these geotechnical borings, there's only certain areas that we can punch holes in the ground. We did find some areas where there was some unexpected organic or topsoil material, which is never good for building on. Other areas, I did find some building materials such as brick and things like that, so again, it gives us somewhat of an idea of what we're running into, but it doesn't obviously tell us everywhere under these parking lots what's there, so. With that being said, I want to also touch on, I know there's been some discussion on acquiring some property for area C where there's currently a house, I believe. My estimated costs do not include the demolition and removal of that house if the school does purchase that area, as well as the demolition and removal of the foundation, so just to be clear, that would have to be separate from the parking lot improvements. Any questions on anything for this? Yeah, I do have a schematic that I included in the last meeting, Greg, I apologize, I don't think you were here.
I'm sorry, I got it, thanks.
Yep, any other questions, good questions? Okay, during none, at this time, I guess we're to the point where we are in the middle of August. September is fast approaching, fall is fast approaching. I don't know if you're ready tonight to do so, but at some point here in the near future, we would like basically some information on what the school would like to do as far as moving ahead with the project scope. As I mentioned at the last meeting, we do like to get our fieldwork done before the snow flies, it just increases efficiencies, reduce costs, things like that. So I don't know if tonight we're in a position to decide on a final project scope and how to move ahead on these areas or not, I guess I would encourage, hopefully if we, if we are at that point, that we could move forward and get authorization to proceed with completing the fieldwork here before it gets too cold, so. I don't know if anybody has any questions, comments on that?
So what do you need from us? How far the scope?
What, well, basically, what I would like to do is just simply get authorization to proceed with fieldwork at this time. If you're not comfortable doing so, that's perfectly fine, I would like to come back then in September, depending on what the final project scope is, and actually put an engineering services agreement in front of you. I really have a tough time doing that until I know exactly what the project scope is gonna be, if you're gonna move ahead with only area A or any combination of the four areas, so. Simply coming out and doing a total survey of the areas that you would like to move forward with. Estimated cost for completing that work is probably around that ten, ten to twelve thousand dollar mark. And again, if you're not comfortable doing that tonight, I completely understand, we can wait till September, however, it just puts us in a better position to get that work done before the snow flies, again, increases efficiency, reduces costs, things like that. But the main thing again is coming up with which areas the, the school would like to, to move forward with, so we can, you know, I can sit down with Trevor, we can start putting together the nuts and bolts, putting some layouts together, things like that as well.
I don't have any questions for Bob.
And if you want me to stick around, I will gladly do so, it's totally up to you folks, if you think somebody will have some questions, comments on anything. Yeah. Yep.
The surface that's anticipated for this project, it would receive. And I apologize if this was addressed to you two years ago, but what's the maintenance cycle? The reason I bring that up, I was and I kind of kicked Trevor on us, but two years ago, I said, let's, let's pay that whole huge momentous parking lot. And, and I still like the idea, but one, I had an individual come up to me at a downtown sometime, a couple of months ago, and said, kind of asked me, what was the cost to maintain the gravel, I know there's moving parts with safety and other benefits associated with it, but the question that he posed to me that I didn't have an answer to was, you know, you guys know what it's gonna cost to maintain this properly, so that's gonna make sense for twenty-three years.
Very good question, I mean, typically, whether it's a street, a parking lot, things like that, maintenance, typically you're seal coating those surfaces every seven to ten years. And we like to see them last twenty to thirty years, typically twenty-five to thirty years is what we like to see for the bituminous life, life cycle itself, but other than that, just simply cracks, crack filling, I don't know if the school does, you do crack filling in the rest of your parking lot, sure?
So that's your question. This year, we spent about nine thousand dollars. Seal coating, crack seal coating, and we should like talking to seal coat people and their kind of way, Bob said, anywhere from five to eight years in there. So typically, just on that Chancemart area, we spend approximately thirty-five hundred bucks a year. Waiting, adding more slash five. And that's a time, of course, like last Friday. So if you take that three grand, thirty-five hundred dollars a year and add that up, in five, six years, that, that covers the cost of the seal coating. So we're really, we're not adding any over and above costs to our annual budget. That would be for all those areas, it would be on a, like, these are done, next year, we're gonna do around the elementary. Those two lots, and this piece one, and then there we go.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, if not, I'll stick around, so, thank you.
So last week, and then this week, we have been busy interviewing for access title positions as well as care physicians. We have some hires that are on for tonight. Florence Schmidt, she'll be a part-time access teacher. Kim Hoger will be the other part-time access teacher, those two will share a position. Tess Hubbard will be an access teacher, she'll be full-time in there. And then Amanda Bells will be a part-time preschool, she'll be four mornings a week with three-year-old preschool. Our instructional leadership team has been meeting, we met again today for two hours. The group has come up with four areas that we're looking at for points of emphasis. They're looking at curriculum, then we decided today that math is gonna be our focus this year. So we'll be looking at our math curriculum, kindergarten through sixth grade, and then getting our math curriculum aligned also with the middle school, junior high age, so throughout the year, we'll be working on the cross-curriculum, planning, get everything aligned there. Also talking about collaborating grade levels, they meet. So we've talked about different things we could do there, as well as meeting with the other grade levels above them and below them, to make sure we're hitting, make sure everyone isn't hitting the same thing too much, we're missing something, is kind of our focus. A cultural liaison is someone that we would like to work with, someone that could help us find interpreters, where we need interpreters, also working with, was brought up with the welcome hosts, different things that we already have established in town that we could better utilize at the elementary. And then the other thing the staff thought was some more cultural training for our staff. It was brought up and some good ideas, some good brainstorming today, the possible things that we could do there. We have new staff workshops starting tomorrow. It is Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday for new staff, that'll be all day for them. Regular staff workshop is starting next Monday through next Thursday, and those will be all days. Elementary is doing preconferences this year instead of an open house. Teachers wanted the opportunity to meet with the families, have a better chance to actually talk with the families rather than sometimes six families would show up at once and they didn't get a chance to really touch base with some families as much as others. So they're in the process of having those preconferences. Activities, cross-country, we're at ten boys, grade seven through twelve, eight girls, seven through twelve. Thirty-three boys in soccer, seven through twelve. Twenty-seven girls in soccer, seven through twelve. Football, thirty-five boys, nine through twelve. And volleyball, thirty girls, eight through twelve. And these numbers fluctuate a little bit, I know Miss Sebo's today told me that soccer was up over thirty girls, which is great, so it seems like these are numbers are from the first week, and we always kind of gain a few more the next week because of people being out of town or things like that the first week, so. They get rolling this week, soccer team goes to Grand Rapids on Friday, and cross-country goes to Purim on Saturday, so. We're out, been going, so, of course, it's been drying out, the sports start, the rain begins, so. Any questions?
Is there, when school starts there, is there a push for coaches or yourself or others to connect with, with students that haven't yet signed up for an activity that I mean, is there just any sort of positional information relayed and after capture students that are supposed to might be away from the area of vacation or with other vulnerabilities?
Good question, the other day when I was down at football practice, Coach Beatty, you know, was new, said, there is anyone here that should be here. I don't really know these guys yet, so help me reach out to them, get them here. But one of the first things high school always does is the first thing is when everyone comes into the gym, they have to follow coaches, I'll get up and talk, and so it's like, they always connect with the kids too, that hey, you're not in something and you want to be, and if they go up and you're regretting it, stop to it. They always are, have a handout for each adult in those games, so that's why I'm here, that's the question.
So. Start off and go over the treasures report, overall, is the beginning of our new fiscal year. Very good in terms of the start of the year, one thing that we're still struggling with a lot of the pandemics is through the month of June, the Department of Education did not pay us any aid, they'll, they're eventually catch, catching up here in August. But that's where the reserves come into play. If you guys hear me preaching about the last couple of months is, we ended up with a really good year, we had investments of four point six million dollars, which is really good to go into the new school year. In terms of cash flow, pretty average month. We got accounts payable of one million dollars, payroll of three hundred and fifty thousand. At the end, we had a negative balance of four hundred and twenty-two thousand, very common. We always pull from our investments to cover all of our, all of our bills, so nothing to worry there. I have a lot to cover, so I'm gonna go rather fast. Collateral report, again, simply, simply saying that we have enough insurance, which we do, we have three point one to cover our checking account, which is really good. I'm gonna be talking a little bit about changes that I'm doing into our banking that are gonna increase the efficiency of my job and pay the district and return a little bit better, and I'll get to that here in a little bit. The next stage is simply journal entries that I do to adjust our books at the end of the month, as you can see, just simple things that go in there, our open account, and then at the end, fifty dollars for a fee for receiving a wire. Here's all of our payables, again, if you guys have any questions on any of the payables, please let me know, and I'm happy to provide or go into it. That is our treasures report. Any question regarding our finances before I go into our other stuff? Okay. One of the things that I'll kind of talk about is policy seven fourteen that deals with our bond balance policy. We started this conversation a couple of months ago, really talking about how to structure our, our district a little bit better, and want to turn the perspective of what we have out there in this community, we made the recommendation last month in our work session, that we wanted the board to look into really increasing that bond balance policy to something that is state average and regional average. And we are recommending tonight that you guys go ahead and approve policy seven fourteen to include the range between twenty-two to twenty-five percent for three months of operating expenses, we are there, you guys. So I'm very confident that we'll continue to maintain our district at that financial health that we truly need, continue to invest in our community, continue to invest in our building, and our teachers, so. Policy seven fourteen, we'll go ahead and reflect the new changes here. The next thing that I'll talk about is the milk bid, by Minnesota statute, we are required to bid for milk vendors every single year, we send out to all the vendors in our area. Primarily, there's three that continuously bid for us, and you can see their trajectory and different years here. Fiscal year or a school year twenty-one, twenty-two, you see the bids up there, we have three bidders, we have Prairie, Prairie Farms, Lando Lakes, Kent's or Cass Clay, and Cashew Distributing for the new vendors of Food Service of America. I go through a class analysis to kind of see where they all rank based on their pricing. As you can see up there, my recommendation to the board is to go ahead and award Prairie Farms, Lando Lakes as the winner of the bid, as they have better pricing, and when I bet at the vendor, they're structured, they're, they went through a little bit of consolidation, which we had problems with a couple of years ago in terms of the quality of the product that we were receiving, but after I talked to some contacts from Lando Lakes, seems like they really structured very well, and in the end, they have better distributor and a new regional manager and new facilities, so we should be able to get that quality milk for our kids, get it on time, and they're the lowest bidder. So my recommendation to the board is, please award Prairie Farms, Lando Lakes as the winner of the milk bin. Other thing that I'll talk about is the truth and taxation, we're in that cycle again. We start up that process again, truth and taxation, at this meeting, we set the date for when we're gonna open it up to the public and go through all of our levy process, so today, just please go ahead and approve that our truth and taxation meeting will be hosted December twentieth, twenty twenty-first at six PM, that is during the regular board meeting. What I don't know is gonna be the location. That all depends on what kind of COVID protocols we have in place, whether it's gonna be here or at the boardroom. The paper that I get sent to the county disclose the boardroom, and if there's any changes for this public notice, I'll let the county know and I'll work with our local newspaper. But at this time, we'll say in the boardroom, and we'll continue to move everything as normal, so when we get to that stage, please approve that the truth and taxation meeting will be December twentieth, twenty twenty-first at six PM, ready, right out, our regular board meeting. Okay. Other things that I'll talk about is the master agreements and negotiations. We changed it a little bit of past practice, which is really good, we were in communication with the union to start negotiations a little bit earlier than past practice, in the past, it would start around the November time, and they would drag on till about March sometimes, this year, we started right off the new fiscal year in July, we started conversating with them and setting those meeting dates. We had a really good committee from our side representing the district, myself, Mr. Corr, Mr. Carter, Mrs. Holden, and Mrs. Stocken, were part of our negotiating committee. And overall, I would say, it was one of the best negotiating terms we have with our union, we had a wonderful partnership with them. We understood what kind of a year they were coming out of, and essentially, we had very mutual agreements and interest in terms of what kind of settlements we wanted to reach. I can tell you that in terms of the language, it was very little, there was a couple of things that, that the district requested, and that had to do with the sick thing. Sick thing is where a certified employee pretty much donates one of the day and it goes into a pool, and if you ever exhaust your personal and sick days, you can borrow from that sick thing, your lines of integrity, so we just changed it all, all small language in there. Simply saying that in order to participate in the sick thing, you needed to exhaust all your sick days and personal days before acquiring some of these days, and the union agreed with us. Other things, points of conversation that really talked about is, we added new language to the master agreement, and that is to continue to enhance the quality education that we provide here at Pelican Rapids. And that is that any teacher that wants to go back to college and obtain their masters in their content area and provide college in the classroom, is gonna be able to obtain a stipend of five hundred dollars upon completing that semester class. Again, it's a huge incentive for our teachers to provide college in the classroom, which is very different than your AP courses. Again, huge improvement for our school to really give, give our kids that edge when they get to college, and for parents to, so really push your kids to, to take lives, and you don't have to pay so much in college tuition. In terms of the financial package that we've put together for them, it was a really good negotiating year. And really what it boiled down to is we give our teachers a three point five percent increase the first year and three point seven five the second year. That is a really good pay for our teachers, it is literally just a little bit above inflation, and our teachers are really happy to see that we are continuing to invest in them. Like I said, it was a very good negotiating year, we met, I believe, three or four meetings, and then we were done. That is the relationship that we want to continue with the union. We understand their needs, they understand ours, and it is respectful, and it is, and it is truthful, and it moves forward very quickly. So thank you to the community that helped us kind of settle really quickly. I'll move on to the non-certified negotiations, past practice in the district is that whatever we settle with our teachers, the rest of the union groups or bargaining groups tend to follow. I'm gonna add one more thing that I forgot to add, we made an adjustment to the four oh three B contributions, that is their retirement account, which is separate from their pension, and that adjustment was the tier system. In the past, we used to have a tier system that would say from year one to six, you get zero. Year six to ten, you get fifteen hundred dollars, and then years ten and above, you get two thousand dollars. We made a change in the teachers' agreement that said that tier system is not gonna go from year one to year three, you get zero dollars, from year four to year six, you get seventeen fifty, so we added two hundred and additional dollars to that first step. First step, and then years, I believe, uh year six and above, uh I can recall exactly what it said, but. It it went over to twenty-two fifty. Uh the premise here when talking with the union is that the first three years of a new teacher. Um if they have no experience, is their probationary time, it is really when the district is evaluating them, helping them grow as teachers. And by the time of that, that summer of that third year going into the fourth year is when they become tenured, and that. And then essentially, what we wanted to do is to marry that compensation that once that teacher graduates from that probationary period. Then they get awarded also with the four oh three, four oh three B match. Uh again, an investment on our employees to keep them here, keep them motivated. Now going into the support staff contract. We did the same thing in terms of the salary adjustment, three and a half the first year and then three point seven five the second year. The difference here is that a lot of our support staff is ad will employment versus the master contract that we have with the union. However, out of courtesy and out of respect, we meet with them as a, as a bargaining group. To really understand their concerns, understand their needs, understand their wants, and have their relationship with that. Past practice, we under the same pay, pay adjustment, and we pay them at an hourly wage. And we're gonna increase that first and second year with the same settlement that we did the uh union. In addition to, we're also going to adjust their four oh three B match by two hundred and fifty dollars as we did with the union. Any questions regarding the settlements before I move on to the last item that I'll talk about? Yes, we were right there.
So right this in context, last, the last contract.
Yes, exactly, great, thank you for saying that, Mr. Carter. The previous year, when we found ourselves in a little bit of a financial trouble, we practically almost froze everything, which is not good. It does not reflect well on us, it is not reflective on our staff, we do not want to do that ever again. Okay, so going into this negotiation, we knew that we've had to eliminate that mistake, and we did that by one, investing in the relationship. Um moving on to the last piece, which is approve the cash manage, uh management agreement with Minnesota National Bank. Uh this year, by, by audit controls, I had to evaluate our banking relationship. So I had to put out a bid for banking services and only two banks qualified. Uh Bell Bank and Minnesota National, in which I evaluated uh intensively to understand their products, their services and their fees. At the end of the day, uh Minnesota National provided a better bid. And in return, uh what we'll do is tonight, we'll go into an agreement with them for one year. We're gonna make a change to our checking account, so we're gonna go from a traditional checking account, but money just moves in and out. To what is called a sweep account, a sweep account is insured by the F C I D, which really. It maxes out at two hundred and fifty, but the new structure of financing. Is that. Behind the scenes, we don't see it, behind the scenes, if we ever go over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For that F C D, F C I D insurance, Minnesota National works on our behalf and then farms the other two hundred and fifty. So what they do is, say for example, we have a million dollars. Behind the scenes, they send two hundred and fifty to a bank over here that will back us up, to a bank over there that will back us up, and then so on and so forth. So we're always having that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar insurance policy. The difference is that like an investment account, the money is now working for us, and we get a better yield rate of return. We're actually gonna be making better than our investment account, so that is one of the reasons why I'm going here. One is I don't have to shop for that collateral report that I provide and my treasurer's report, so at the end of each month. I have a one-hour call with Minnesota National Bank, and I go, alright, this is how much money we have in our checking account, let's go through our collateral, figure out. Which properties the bank is gonna put up to make sure that we have enough insurance, and then we sign a bunch of paperwork that's been authorized, da da da, right? We're moving away from that to an actual government insured product banking, which is the sweep account. But I don't have to do this hour call at the end of a month, making sure that all the collateral reports come in and we have substantial backing up. Now, the bank does it for us. Yeah, efficiencies, we get better return, we're gonna get better returns than our investment account, right now. And our, our investment account that we have with the Minnesota Liquid Fund is very conservative. Um why? I'm not sure, I'm not part of the board, I don't understand their investment strategy, but they're more on the safer side, because it's public funds. If you switch to this gold sweep account, the money is guaranteed, and we have better interest rate in return. Uh in addition to that, we get better, uh we get better banking services, where one, they don't charge us a lot of. Business accounts and are classified as a business, they charge you per the item that you run through the checking account. So if you run a check, they charge you ten cents, if you get a deposit, they charge you ten cents, or whatever that fee is. Minnesota National brings away all of that, because we're moving to the sweep account. Okay, so we're getting less fees, more return, less work for me. Approve it, please. Uh that's all I have for you guys. Any other questions?
Hey, a few high school items right away, individual student scheduling, the seables and the U K of students.
Could you either move closer, take your mask off? I, I can hear you, it's. It's those people that can't see, uh can't hear you.
And that's part of my problem, I keep bumping into this.
They won't see you, but.
A few high school items right away, uh individual student scheduling, this is Seaballs has been meeting with. Uh students on scheduling and any changes, additions that they would like. Uh her goal was by tomorrow to have all the schedules. Able for students to see, and she actually opened it up, so students, high school students should be able to see their schedules this evening, so she met her goal. Staff workshop items, we got new staff workshop this week, starting tomorrow, the twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth. Uh staff workshop for district staff will be next Monday, sorry, next Monday through Thursday. Seventh grade orientation and ninth grade orientation will be Wednesday, September first, seventh grade orientation will be at six P M. Open house at the high school will be from four to seven P M, and students or families, students are able to tour the building. Meet teachers, open their lockers, and pay the activity fees or lunch in items like that. Staff development this week, uh this is Jim Sussky is offering technology training for staff district wide. On August twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, uh topics of training are Google Drive basics, Google Classroom, tech tools, Google Forms in. Google, Google Slides. This reminder with technology student laptop devices, we got new devices for students. So every student grade seven through twelve will receive their, their laptop here. Uh at open house for the first week of school. Staffing changes at the high school, I wanna thank Mr. Rissbit, who has resigned from business education. Position, uh I wanna thank him for all his work, his use of service. He's a great teacher, a great person, a great role model, and we appreciate his, his service here at Pelican Rapids High School. With that late resignation, Mrs. King, who had been hired already this summer, she'll be uh filling his role. Taking on his classes, and then on the personnel to hire would be Mrs. Hall for point one four, she would. Uh be hired, and in her schedule, she'll take on the seventh and eighth grade, Mrs. King was gonna take that. So she'll have Spanish, and then seventh grade technology and eighth grade technology. And uh student handbook. Have chance to look at student handbook for the high school, there's a few changes, changes of dates, um staffing in there, it's updated. Uh student information, what's their names, uh for the class officers, that was updated, the calendars, the dates, everything like that. Master calendar, uh not a lot of changes from last year, and any attendance policies or anything like that, so. Nothing really big on changes there, I did highlight, we did share um the changes from last year. Okay, so that's um for approval, employee handbook is also on the agenda tonight for improved uh rule. Uh one thing that we changed in the employee handbook was that. Uh staff will receive uh activity pass, and that's been done in the past, plus one guest. Um it's been usually for their spouse, but we changed it to one guest, just because if they would come with their child, maybe a college or something like that. Um that they can bring someone like that, or a parent, yeah. Time clock plus protocol is a few changes in there with the our time clock protocol there. Other than that, not a lot of other changes, other than the mental health, we put in there to make sure it was clear that staff. You get three free sessions through Lakeland Mental Health Center, that's per year. Soccer field on the agenda to accept. Uh the gift from the city of the soccer field, there's no charge to us. Where we play soccer right now, which is behind our field, the land, which is just the soccer field, that's what they would get the, the school. Because the school is maintenance, moaning it, watering it, taking care of this soccer. District priorities and goals, we've talked um last couple meetings, work sessions and. And uh school board meetings, our district priorities and district goals, so that's for this coming school year. And this reminder, our district goals to increase third grade reading proficiency by five percent. Decrease the achievement gap for free reduced students by five percent. Increase graduates attending post-secondary to sixty-five percent, and increase the district graduation rate to ninety-five percent. We've been well above state average graduation rate, um we've been right around between eighty-eight, ninety-three. Our goals to get it to ninety-five percent. Next item is the resolution for the health and safety measures that you will uh vote on tonight for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Uh with the health and safety measures, we approved last year before the school year. That with the superintendent along with the COVID. Team, which would have administration, school board members on it. And uh union rep, teacher union rep, and some support staff, and our COVID coordinator. From both schools, part of that team, that would meet weekly, so we would meet every Thursday. And then on Friday, we come out with our dashboard, our dashboard would contain our positives. That we have in the building, staff and students. Okay, we're also looking at, how do we, what are we looking at for the county number? Last year, we would work with Otter Till, Otter Till County Public Health, we'd work with them, they would join our meetings. And give us their advice of what we should do. Last year was a successful year. We were able to stay in person the majority of the time at the elementary school, a couple of classes that had to be quarantined. At the high school, we were hybrid majority of the year. We're going to in-person at the end. We did a good job with our protocols last year, following through our staff, and I give a lot of kudos to our students. For following our protocols at the elementary school and at the high school. So the resolution is to give the authority to the superintendent, along with the COVID team to guide us, like we did last year. Meeting weekly, to help us guide what we should be doing with our protocols in both buildings. Next item is opening plan, which is including, which is included in the health and safety measures. Uh plan that we included for our opening for this coming school year. A few things that I wanna talk about in the opening plan for this year, this school will be in person. With regular start and end times for each building. Face coverings per guidelines from C D C, M D H and M D E. Face kinds are recommended for those who are vaccinated and not vaccinated. Students will need to have face coverings, as it'll still require while on the bus, per federal mandates regarding public transportation. So on the bus, if it's an activity, if it's coming to school, going home from school on the bus, it's a federal mandate, they need a mask. Again, in the buildings, they are recommended. For staff and students, visitors who are not vaccinated and vaccinated. Masks will be available for staff, students and visitors in the office. Social distancing, staff will work hard to maintain minimum of three feet. But six feet is best practice. Vaccines. Pelican Rapids School District by four eight is not requiring COVID nineteen vaccinations for students, staff, volunteers or visitors. Health screening and quarantine, self-streaming for symptoms of illness will be required. If you are ill, stay home and report your symptoms to the school nurse. We will have a nurse at each building, like we did last year. Schools are mandated to report any positive COVID nineteen cases to the M D H. We are mandated to do that. Students and staff with confirmed cases of COVID nineteen or exposures will be asked to quarantine. Or isolate based on recommendations from M D H. Vaccinated individuals will not be required to quarantine in most cases. Good hygiene. We'll continue to encourage good hygiene by washing their hands with soap and water during bathroom breaks and before meals and snacks. Hand sanitizer will continue to be available at each classroom, as well as throughout the buildings. Food service meals, at the high school, students wait lunch and breakfast in the commentary, we'll follow the same protocols. That we ended last year, we have them facing the same way, and we spread them out using our two comments. Our Legends Gym foyer and our Legends Gym. So we will spread them out. Cleaning, uh sorry, elementary school students will eat breakfast in their classrooms at the elementary, besides kindergarten, will eat in the cafeteria. All students will eat lunch in the cafeteria, Mr. Nelson, do you have anything to add there?
Yeah, um breakfast in the classroom, that was wanted by the teachers. Is that way if students come late, they're not going down to the cafeteria and missing part of the. Morning instruction, and they thought it really worked well, kids ate more, they came in, had the breakfast. Class started, they would start eating as they went, and um the teachers, that more kids ate, and. They uh they really thought it was good deal, so.
Thank you. Cleaning, clean portals will be the same as last year. Drinking fountains and water refill stations will be open for the students. Facilities HVAC systems will be running at maximum capacity to ensure high airflow and air quality. Combinations for special education, appropriate accommodations for children with disabilities with respect to health and safety policies and procedures will be provided. Parents, guardians will work with their with their child's case manager. Mental health. This is a concern of ours, we have a speaker coming in for our district staff on Tuesday morning to address mental wellness for all of us, for staff and for our students. What we're doing right away is we're making sure that we're communicating what's available for students and staff. Is that we have Miss Holheim and Miss Ness, we're at the high school and elementary, and they are from LSS, Lutheran Social Services. Mrs. Seebles is our high school counselor, she also will be available, we have their emails here and their phone numbers. Then we also put some information regarding Otter Till County Crisis Mental Health and Crisis Text Line. Next item that I want to share is not on here, our admin team has met frequently. If there's any concerns with in-person learning, we are recommending that the families contact the building principal and meet with the building principal and COVID coordinator so we can help meet the needs of their child. Any questions, concerns on any items that I talked about, I know I talked about a lot tonight.
I got some questions, but maybe it'd make more sense to go over it during the the actions, the ones on the employee or the student handbook.
Yeah, thank you. Set them up as consent items. Item A is important meeting minutes July nineteen, two thousand twenty-one. Regular meeting minutes. And B, financial claims, July bills. C is the treasures report. And D, accept donations to the PRHS Scholarship Fund in memory of Don Steves, an obvious ten dollars. PRHS Scholarship Fund in memory of Don Steves, who lent him clean murky twenty dollars. And E, personnel. Who resignation of Amanda Baxter as kitchen cook at the high school?
John. Just a little more.
A little bit more, okay. All right, do I need to back up?
No, just start with resignations.
All right, approved resignations of Amanda Baxter as kitchen cook at PRHS. Approved resignations of Andrea Hampton, yes, part-time special education paraprofessional at the elementary. Approved resignation of Lexi Dunbar as assist interventionist at the elementary. Approved resignation of Abby Frisanti at ANSYS as an ANSYS intervention at the elementary. Approved resignation of Melissa Hayden as part-time kitchen helper at the elementary. Approved the resignation of Cassie Klopstadt as part-time pre-K paraprofessional at the elementary. Approved the resignation of Lane Rispit as one point O FTE, business education teacher at the high school. Approved resignation of Kelly Thorson as Title One teacher at the elementary. Approved resignation of Alejandra Vigomaz as an ELL paraprofessional at Viking Elementary. Approved a leave of absence for Courtney Thorson until Tuesday, July, excuse me, Tuesday, September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Approved the hire of Tess Hubbard as ANSYS interventionist one point O FTE at the elementary. Approved the hire of Lawrence Schmitz as ANSYS interventionist part-time at the elementary. Approved the hire of Kim Howrud as an ANSYS interventionist part-time at the elementary. Approved the hire of Joy Miller as ELL paraprofessional at the high school. Approved the hire of Amanda Bells as early childhood education teacher, point five FTE. Addition of point one four FTE for Bridget Hall to be one point O FTE. Explain for us for motion. You'll entertain a motion to approve the consent items?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items as well.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brittany. Any discussion on the consent items? No discussion, all those favor approving consent items signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same. Consent items carry. Now on the business items, approve policy seven one four, the fund balance policy. Mr. Martinez explained that was the twenty-two, twenty-five percent fund balance.
I'll move to approve the seven fourteen fund balance policy.
Motion by Greg, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brittany. We need to do a first reading or second reading. Yep. Okay. You need to restate that.
I'm going to rescind my prior motion to approve the seven fourteen fund balance policy.
Okay, motion to rescind by Greg. Do we have a second? My Brittany. All those favor rescinding the first motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. She carries. Restate it again, Greg.
I'll approve the seven four community fund balance policy. First reading, I'll restate that. I'll I'll approve the first reading of the seven fourteen fund balance policy.
Motion by Greg.
Second.
Okay. More discussion. No more discussion, all those in favor of approving the first reading of the fund balance policy signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same. Here it is. And B, in business items, approve Viking Elementary Student Handbook, two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two. I am.
I'll second.
Second by Greg. Discussion on the elementary handbook.
I have a question. Last year, we talked a little bit, this might pertain to the PRHS staff student handbook that's not on the list, but last year, if you recall, there was a discussion on attendance impacting or potentially impacting the students' grades. You know, I read through these policies, I didn't see that reflected in there, you know, was that removed?
Okay. Go ahead.
And I just add that I want to thank Mrs. Evergon for her work to and through and kind of updated the handbook so matched a lot of things where my high school handbook. So, nothing, pick up, drop off will be the same as last year, everything, but five things, the greatest pictures and achievements, so thank you, Mr. George George.
Motion by Ann, second by Greg, any more discussion? No discussion, all those in favor of approving the elementary student handbook signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same. She carries. And O C, approve PRHS student handbook for two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. So. Motion by Greg. Second. Second by Molly. Any discussion on the high school handbook? No discussion, all those in favor of approving the high school student handbook signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same. Handbook carries. Item D, approve the employee handbook for two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two. Second by Molly. Any discussion on the employee handbook? No discussion on the employee handbook, all those in favor of approving it signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same. End books approved. Item E, approve the acceptance of the soccer field. Motion by Brittany, second by Ann.
What was the alternative to the acceptance of soccer field? Was the city intending to continue to own it? Relationship between the school district and the city would remain in place as it historically has been in terms of maintenance and things like that? Or just something that the city I think talked to Brian a little bit about.
Well, that's that's an option, and if you want to work with us. This way, with us receiving the gift of land, we do not need to go through any city approvals and go into the city council. Any changes that we want to do, feel, we will just give more approval. From expenses, did we, did the school district cover the maintenance expenses? Each year or does that share in some traffic between the city and the school district? I don't know, but Mr. Steves.
We shared clinical applications of the lessons. The void was also shared, maybe a little bit inside. So what we will do, like baseball field or we're going thirds, and I will go half of the soccer league. That'll estimate the cost of increase on that includes holding time, or license costs. Thing that's really far benefit is the city is not into athletics. It's not really a subject that's ours. Score mentioned, we try to do to like the ways of out there. Because also it's a little a lot of struggle, just you know, it's not like they do, not like you guys rescue school activities, all of that. Proposal, we can bring it to you and see that it's fix that process a lot sooner. Now all the issues of features. Um. We inspect them, we have inspected already, so we're giving a lot of things that what's yours and what's ours.
I've lived, I've lived here since two thousand three. And I can't, I mean, I don't, I don't recall there ever being buildings or anything located on that soccer field property. Does anybody here aware of that, any buildings, any sort of dumping of anything? I'm thinking from a contamination standpoint, you know, if we acquire the property, it becomes contaminated in some capacity, a lot of times it can be the owner, regardless of who actually caused the contamination. Does anybody have any longer history from Pelican Rapids, you know, that could shed light on how that property has been used prior to two thousand three?
There was a lower area, and then construction projects, start to see it, and it all coming out. So it's put in that, then you like get it up to the very limits. And then it got to the level where it was usable, and it started with that, and then some money from the government, and then we really did that. Grant money from General for to do runs and I can tell you before.
You know, the city, the, as part of the discussion with the city, was the idea of entering into agreement that would allow the school district the flexibility to make improvements for the soccer facility without having to be required to go back to council each time actions were taken. Any discussion like that?
No discussion.
Is that like, I like, you know, from the school district's perspective, you can utilize the property and not all. I like that idea, in my opinion. I understand that there's some practical difficulties, the way things are now. But I was curious whether or not any part of that discussion meant to, well, it's not just an agreement. We agree to cover a hundred percent of the maintenance, but so long as we make improvements, we don't need to recommit to council for approval beforehand. To me, that'd be best case scenario, in my opinion. This is only because we still have the luxury of accomplishing everything that we want and not owning the property.
Sure, so that wasn't discussed. Of us being able to do something without their approval. However, I believe that's so we've had, Mr. Smith said, Mr. Stevens said, I believe that they'd want approval of what we would do that if they would have ownership of that. Want me to go back and have that discussion again?
I know two years ago, when we got the donation back there, we had to do some things because people donating to donate their school, but they couldn't donate to a city. There was something because of their how affected their taxes or whatever their donation status. So there was some things we had to do that when we figured it worked out, and both sides we looked at improvements, I'd go to the city homes only for approval, even when you put the scoreboard out, you know, across the city, nothing that go through them, that's for permission.
I know the balance that I've had, I definitely really did the nature of doing something. Because we were in the pipeline. How do you stage going, so. But that's up, yeah. Could have done, and so the council has why they get their approval. It's kind of self that blocks it, it's just, that's how we operate. We get the, we add that, which is, you guys. That was for time. So. I just to check and see. Just through the process, has that already been done by?
What happened, same just ten years from now? Decided that they wanted to use it for something else, we continue to improve it every year. And own it or whatever, then say they decided to do something else, then maybe our, everything we put into it.
That's what I was thinking, if there's not an agreement in place, we can normalize that in a way. That could be another component of it. Especially if Especially if, if it's still at the same time, say, the city costs, because let's say the district in exchange to then keep it, agree to cover a hundred percent of the maintenance between school district and soccer association. There's still a benefit to the city. That's a second. I don't know anything about the property in terms of contamination. Could be paranoid from my perspective, so I'm not here to upset the apple cart. Same, those kind of weird things can pop up. But Trevor, you and the kid, since ninety-three, you know, they call each other out there.
No, this is kind of a little small block.
Nothing close out there, no tanks, any sort across the road.
The only thing I would have been out there was yard for something stuff, that's located it's just like what we bought there. That's grew back in that, probably twelve century. No towing station, service stations.
I could probably go back to mid-eighties.
Mary, Mr. Schlemmern, like the keys. John, do you mind if I ask? By what I mean, would you, put you on, but my question's not regarding the city or the school district. Do you have any history of ordering contamination tests through the Minnesota department? Who does those tests?
Typically, what we do is, that's part of the reason why we actually did soil borings on the parking lots that we're looking at improving is typically during those soil boring practices or well, if there's contaminated soil, petroleum, whatever may be, a lot of times they'll show up when you do soil borings, that's another reason why we do them. And typically, the Minnesota Public Control Agencies in, involved in practices or cleaning up both contaminated soil sites.
And I, you're not, you're not here to answer these questions, but if you're willing to, you know, if we decided to accept this, but it was contingent upon the MPCA performing what the MPCA needs to do to get us verification that there's no contamination issues out there, is that an undertaking that can take two months to twelve months or longer? That'd be based on your experience with MPCA, if any?
Um, the only time that we've been involved contamination is when we found them, heard soil borings. And the, the process of getting those sites cleaned up, the paperwork completed, can definitely take some time. As far as going back and just saying, hey, MPC, are you aware of anything in this area? I've not done that before. I'm assuming it can be done, but they probably have a list of contamination sites that they're aware of. That can be checked on, as far as the, the response time on that, I can't answer that. Depending on the state agency or national federal agency that we work with, the response times do differ. So that's the best answer that I can give.
Hey, thanks for wasting that. Appreciate it.
Put you on the spot. I believe Mr. Rested might have was an old farm out there. Back in Mary's section, it's always there.
Right on that. So right on soccer field as a term of service? More to the north of the
Too low.
Yeah. More, more to the north of the, the basketball court?
Yeah, more to the west.
Oh, oh, I see. Is time of the essence with regard to want like significant decisions to be made on the soccer field improvements? Are there certain ones that are in the hopper right now that that the school district wants to see take place? Like within, during this fall yet? Nelson, Mr. Martinez?
I'll speak as representative of us. He's also seeing that. Now speaking of vision. First is, just like this is a big stock of motivation, we're trying to find better proposals. Invested it. See the return. Not much to spare at, at this comfortable. Being an advocate for soccer in the community, it's one of the greatest gifts to give to our students. Have the same passion as, as an association that's for the school to own it would be a way better partnership. We have significant investment, why not? Lights. Group that's private. Event years, we're starting to fight with bond rates for Monday. I can't, this is all so for me, I can tell you that conversation will be kind of the soccer association. It was before the school movement. Are a are a, however, once the organization registers with a point of time, we can put money in the association once that tax we can provide it. Partnership focus as well. There is there is significant amount of organizations, companies, and insider investors that look into quite a bit. All that is one of the fastest growing sports in the country, in our community. It will be for the state that looks such. Now it's the business manager. I don't see why we're in a bunch of weeks. We invest in all of other our activities. Why wouldn't we want to go invest in the soccer field? We have a football field for football and a baseball field for baseball, and a soccer field for soccer. Track for track. Why wouldn't we want to take the opportunity for a factory field for our cycle program? That is, then what? Use investment to our that's going to be, there's going to be more sand costs than we're getting, the maintenance that we already talked about, we currently budgeting for. Currently pay for electricity already, so every time this portal refuses, we'll face it. When the, when the soccer association donated the bleachers, the city called us and said, we got insurance, we don't want it. Covering those features already. Lights. I don't see why we wouldn't. But we, but we wouldn't want to accept it. In terms of legal paperwork, my conversation has been that if there is a change title or anything, they will be, we will take on that, so if there's anything, we will take that two hundred dollars, three hundred dollars.
I'm not, I'm worried about just uncertainty of the site contamination.
I, I understand, I understand where you're going with that.
What I'm wondering is if we approve the acceptance of the land for the soccer field? Because I agree, I want, I want to invest in any activities that any of our students are contending to benefit from. But the first idea was to improve the current situation by leaving all the liability on the city side with regard to, for example, contamination. But enjoy all the benefits of being able to use it, but in terms of contrast with the city that allow us to make improvements to whatever extent necessary to accommodate the soccer program. To kind of have the best of both worlds in that sort of situation, so. Well, I, those projects we talked about, well, really, are those projects that, that the district can be looking at in the fall?
No, we have everything scheduled for next thing in the Let me ask you this question, as, as in previous position as the city attorney, were there ever anything that came across your desk from the historical records that there had been any, any expense of, of what you're talking about in terms of pollution or anything that ever crossed your desk?
I don't have any records, that's why I'm asking the question, I don't know if it involved contamination, any, anything on the site of contamination, that's all.
I guess I'm asking you on the professional side, why would you or the city, if anything crossed your desk that hinted that, that we can
if it did, then I genuinely do not want to do this.
But I'm asking you the question, did it ever? Cross your guys.
I, what I've said, Rudy, I've never, there's, I've received zero information in forty-six years, that's how long I've been living, that there's any contamination out there in any capacity whatsoever. I don't know the history of this property, other than evening, resident here since two thousand and three. Trevor indicated he, he called it back in nineteen ninety-three. And Mr. Rested said he thought Mr. Mr. Slight's my own that farm set here or bought there prior to that. That's the only information I have was regarding the usage of this property or any sort of corresponding contamination, that's why I'm asking the questions of the school board and then so and then I, I understand your, it's there. And that's all, that's all, I don't, I'm not here to, to respond to questions that, that I've already answered, Rudy. And I get your passion for the program, I'm passionate for it too. You're not going to see me be a person that would ever want to encourage one department or one program for our students more so than the other. I'm not interested in doing that. And nobody asking me in my professional career, if I've ever seen a piece of paper that says the, the soccer field and of course on legal description has been contaminated, if I did, I wouldn't have been asking these questions.
Right, so my lead, my lead to my, my conclusion today is to simply say, if there hasn't been any risks that we know of, why is it all of a sudden a concern of us? We can definitely order a study to be done to, to appease that particular aspect that we're asking for. But if there has been no history with the knowledge that we have here, your previous, your previous experience and, and what we know of, why is it all of a sudden a thing that we need to check out?
It's not all of a sudden, this is the first time this was proposed to the board tonight. Mr. Court had corresponded with me by text. I had asked him, why is the school district interested in acquiring it versus the city retaining ownership of it? When you say why all of a sudden, I'm raising this question, when else was it appropriate to discuss it with the board? Because I don't recall if anyone was general for it, it was or was not at that meeting.
Motion second on the table? Approve the transfer of the soccer field. Any more discussion? Discussion?
I think it should be modified to be contingent on obtaining MPCA clearance that there's no contamination on the site. But that's my further discussion, I know that's not the motion.
More discussion? Here, no more discussion, all those in favor of approving the acceptance of the soccer field, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same, aye. Acceptance carries. And Matt, approve the resolution for health and safety measures for the 2021 to 2022 school year.
I need permission for the first question.
Motion by Brenda. You have a second? Molly? We have a motion in a second on the floor, we have a discussion on the resolution.
This allows the COVID, COVID team to meet weekly. Right, and constantly monitor the data and information provided by the CDC, the Minnesota Department of Health, and our children's public health. So that regardless of what is placed on the regardless of what's written in the resolution right now in terms of mask being recommended, or any other term or condition in that, those are all absolutely subject to change week to week, is that right? That's, that, okay, thank you.
Similar structure to what we did last year with COVID team. Things culturally.
As, as the Otterdale County Public Health or Minnesota Department of Health contact the CDC. Do they, have they ever explained why they distinguish between mandates and situations and recommendations in other situations? Now, I get the logical part of it, but is it, is it, we'll wait until things get bad and then mandate it? I just never, this is not going to get the COVID Jesus need asking a question to the Otterdale County Public Health or Minnesota Public Health. I was just curious. It's a lot of confusion for everybody, regardless of their personal opinions on that, because I respect everybody's opinion on, 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 and weighing in on the issue, but
that's due to mandates where emergency powers that you place upon districts with masks.
What folks that I tell, uh, public health. What, what, which individuals that I, I don't know, the director of public, public health that you meet with?
Yeah, we got seen to Christmas.
So when they say we recommend it, do they, do they say we recommend it because in their professional opinion? It's, it protects Eric, if I have the Delta variant of COVID nineteen or however long it's for, are they recommending it because of that? That in their opinion, and Minnesota Department of Health's opinion, that by me wearing a mask, now, that would better protect Eric or Sherry from contracting the vaccine if I was or contracted the illness, if I was diagnosed as being positive, is that the logic behind the recommendation?
So I believe that they follow the CDC guidelines, that it's hard to put it on there. And not get them just travels down. So that comes from the top.
But I'm wondering, if, if they're recommending, do they recommend it because they think it's safer for people to wear masks?
I think, you know, they're leaving it up to the individual's choice. The recommendations are many.
No, I get that. I mean, they don't recommend a lot of things, they have, they recommend wearing a mask. What I'm wondering is, has Otterdale County Public Health justified or provide the logic behind the recommendation?
CDC, the MB, and Otterdale County Public Health have said that with a mask on, whether you're vaccinated or unvaccinated, can reduce the spread of COVID nineteen. And then they are saying, if you're saying if I wear a mask, I okay if somebody else is wearing a mask.
No, I, I asked, if I wear a mask, does Otterdale County Public Health, the Minnesota Department of Health, and CDC, is it their position that me wearing a mask, if I'm, if I test positive, if I'm positive right now? Are they, have they taken the position that my mask, me wearing my mask protects Derek and Sherry?
And also yourself.
And I'm not saying fully protects someone, or just not And I'm not saying fully protects someone, but it increases the likelihood that they will not become contaminated.
And that you yourself also will not, or, you know, it helps both ways. It protects you and it protects others. I brought this back from our hearing conversation, and we know that will hold it, so.
Is the Delta variant based on the information received by the COVID-15? More risk to those individuals who do not have the opportunity to get vaccinated? Now, specifically, if they're above the twelve and under, oh, I'm not sure what's changed. Are there certain vaccines that children under the age of twelve can now receive? Has the Otter Tail County Public Health Department, the Minnesota Department of Health, or the C D C indicated a Delta variant? Which I don't understand, I'm not a healthcare professional, that's why I'm asking this question. Does the Delta variant holds a material and more significant risk to those kids ages twelve and under than what I understand COVID nineteen did in two thousand twenty-four?
Do they complete this mess? Yes.
More discussion?
Yeah, I know there's a challenge, I know. You have, you do have the flexibility to allow individuals to
They have the opportunity for visitors to speak, and that's it. There's a motion in a second. Any other discussion? No more discussion. All those in favor of approving the resolution for the health and safety measures for twenty-one, twenty-two school year, signify by saying aye. Aye? Those opposed, same. Who's the vendor for milk products for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year? And that's for
So move based on Mr. Martin's recommendations.
Discussion on the milk product biz. Discussion, all those in favor of proving dairy farms and Matt Lake, signify by saying aye. Those both same? Item H, prove district priorities and goals for two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. The motion by him. Second by Any discussion on the district priorities and goals? Here, no discussion. All those in favor of proving district priorities and goals, signify by saying aye. Aye? Those opposed, same. Who's carrying? Item I, approve the truth of taxation, public meeting date, December twentieth, twenty-one, at six P M.
Make a motion. All the meeting dates, December twenty.
Second then. Any discussion on the truth and taxation date? No discussion. All those in favor of approving the truth and taxation date for December twentieth, two thousand twenty-one, six P M, signify by saying aye. Aye? Those opposed, same. M J, approve the project scope and field. So would you need to know, let's say we only did area A and B, would you need to know tonight, or is it best to do it all at first and then scale back later?
Um, I guess I think the best practice would be is that tonight you had one or two areas that you absolutely know you want to do to authorize us to move ahead of just those areas, and then if you want to add at a future date, we can come back and add those areas. That would be my recommendation. I don't know if people have thoughts, if it's, you know, all four, if it's only one or A and B, what your thoughts are.
The only thing I would say is about how how long would this process take, yeah, what's involved in it, because I'm trying to marry your timeline to the pocketing piece of it, just to make sure, because there's a reservation for that before we also need a task that when we receive the proceeds from from that bond, we can pay expenses out of the general fund and eventually reimburse ourselves back once we achieve the proceed. You try to make sure that our timelines are aligned just to move over to the project as the bond, and eventually prove that. That's that's my whole thing, is to try to figure out that that.
Sure. So Rudy, are you asking as far as how long will just the field work take? Are you talking about a schedule for the whole project in general?
Uh, just the field work, and if there's going to be some cost to that four channel, uh, just to know when we pass that sixty-day reimbursement.
Sure. Uh, I would say the field work, if we got authorization tonight to move forward with it, hopefully we would have it done by the middle of October. You know, that that would be my, my expectation. Um, if we waited till next month, obviously that would be delayed out even further. And again, if you, if you absolutely don't feel comfortable making the decision tonight, that's perfectly fine as well. We can make it work if you wanted to wait until till September to make the final decision on those areas. It's just nice, like I said before, to get authorization, be able to get it done before the snow flies, but if you're not ready to make that decision, I'm not going to say you have to make it tonight, so.
Our next meeting is September twenty.
Now, if we got authorization on September twentieth to do the field work, you know, we can get that done hopefully by November, November first, which that's, I still have a comfort level in doing that. And then I can come back in, in October, hopefully with a design services agreement. As long as we get authorization to get out there and start that field work, you know, no later than probably October, October first, I feel very comfortable loading. As long as you're comfortable with that timeline as well.
The safety concerns, is that correct, the students?
Yes.
Is that purchase in the works and it wasn't before?
So that's why I would be a little bit disappointed.
Yeah. No, and that's separate costs, yes. I just meant like haven't been working on acquiring it this time.
Yes, we had contact, they got that.
Okay.
I guess my biggest thing is we wanted to come tonight, and I know I talked to Brian about this last week, is I don't want to get into October before we make this decision. Then it's really going to put us in a pinch, so actually I'm here tonight kind of to spur on the process a little bit. I know I've got into a lot of situations where all of a sudden we're in October and we're still talking about it. That's what we want to avoid. So again, wait another month. We will, I'm very comfortable if you want to wait for another month to make the decision. That's perfectly fine with me, but we probably want to have something decided by the next, by the next meeting, I guess, is my message, so.
I personally am comfortable with A and D. A being the main one we have been discussing, and the reason why we brought this up, D because of Trevor's safety. Obviously, B is probably, B and C are more missionless items to me. I know we kind of were thinking, let's get it all together. And overall cost, cumulative cost isn't that much difference if you do B and C, but I guess to get the ball rolling if you wanted to, A and D or whatever I'm at. Actual areas need to be, because if we were to do within the future, it's going to be a lot more than that to bring it back. I'm not so sure what areas C involves, because as far as what the goal cost would be to acquire.
Yeah, I was just reading our time out here with Kelly. If we move forward today with the field work, suggesting, say we move a day to a two. We got the others, who is just the might, I think, that next September four, we will pass the September uh universal reservation, that we call work, call it about sixty days before, so if bomb has expenses that you live or miss people work, we can invoice us, we can pay them, and then later December, January, when you pass the the bond, we can, once we receive those proceeds, we can pay ourselves back. So the timing is right up.
So if we're to deal with, say, all four, and then we decide we wanted to back out of C.
Yeah, I mean, we want, we want to approach the bond, these until, maybe the separate January. Now of that, I think that's a question to, if we say all four, and then later September, November, we say, I know what we're going to do, just in a manual number four, can we pull that from a project's hoping to move forward with three, it's going to four.
What I would feel more comfortable with is if you're on the fence on something, let's just leave that over here right now. Let's get done, the field work's done with what you know you want to do. And if you want us to come back and add something later, we can do that later. The last thing I want to do is come out and we get some availability here in the next few weeks. We send somebody up, we come, if we're going to do it, we probably want to get it all done at one time if we know we want to do it, and then you decide you don't want to and waste that money. I mean, we're twenty miles down the road, twenty-five miles down the road, so I'd rather take a conservative approach. We know we want to do a, whatever the three are, four, or two or three are, and if you want to add something later, we'll deal with that later. Well, we can accommodate that, so. There are a lot of questions with that, with C because of the structure being there. What is it going to cost, obviously, to purchase that town and structure? Things like that, and that again would have to be a separate contract, except from what we're doing, parking lots, I understand.
Getting those comments for you guys, right? I would like to, yeah, definitely, we would know, really totally.
Would you have to do us a little boring on that particular property as well? Sorry.
We've done close. I mean, I I feel comfortable. Um, we've done the borings in close proximity. There's obviously a residential house there. I'm assuming it's been there for quite some time. Actually, I was a little bit more concerned with the air conditioning being across the road, if they cannot do the borings on. Uh, I'm more concerned with that site than than I than I was with the house in Florida, so I feel comfortable with the borings that we got.
No, not at this time. Right now, what Mr. Stevens is asking us for is, you okay, don't stop and start field work? It won't be up till December, January, when we say, all right, what's that defined algorithm, and we have a contract out there, so.
The other thing about coming back and doing the field work on the area near the intersection of Third is there's not nearly as much detailed information on those sites that we would have to collect, so if it did get later, we did get a little bit of snow, I'm not as much concerned about getting information off of those sites because they're fairly there's, there's not a lot there as far as structure and things like that. There's not a lot, lot there to collect, so.
Certainly, Mr. Sees, the benefit of paving that parking lot across from the fine arts, we would have lighting, um, better lighting. I don't think there's any lighting there right now. That, that would be a benefit to have. And when we see with our families, you know, attending uh finance activities, grandparents that attend, would be nice for safety.
Just one last. We need to coordinate with the city at all with this kind of four project that's coming out, with the construction of, the construction of it, or property line, yes, that's where we'll stop, we should have a true one, we put the investment, and then we want to go to tear it out.
Yeah, no, we'll definitely coordinate with that effort. Um, we're working with the city, uh, been done on that effort. We'll definitely coordinate with those folks when we do the design at this party. Very good point, Rudy.
I'd make a motion to approve the projects for A, B, and D, and the search.
Motion in a second. Approve the product scope and field work for A, B, and B. Discussion. And we get more information, we can still go to see next.
Sounds good. I will be in contact with the folks, Trevor and Brian, probably on this effort, and we'll, we'll move ahead to start, uh, yeah, A and B.
Yeah, just keep it updated on the top of mind, that what I'm doing right now is not saying.
No discussion? No discussion. All those in favor of approving A, B, and D for project scope and field work, signify by saying aye. Aye? Those opposed, same? Motion carries and breaks at three fifteen.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so. After you've had the first round, two or three. We can go through the others. Let's move on to master agreement, twenty twenty-one, twenty-three. Scrag, my, Mr. Martinez. Motion to approve the master here for twenty-one, twenty-two. Second one, great. Any discussion of the master agreement for twenty-one, twenty-three? Here, no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Those opposed, same. Next agreement carries. Next item will be approved non-certified negotiation settlement, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-three.
Washington for non-certified negotiations, seven, twenty-one, twenty-three.
Brenda, second? Any discussion on non-certified settlement? Any discussion on non-certified settlement? There is no discussion, all those in favor of approving the non-certified negotiation settlement. By saying I. I, those both say. Derek's. By the man, true cash management agreement with Minnesota National Bank. So described to us by Mr. Martinez. Make a motion. Brittany. Bill second.
Okay.
By Ann. Any discussion on the cash management agreement with Minnesota National Bank? Discussion, all those in favor of approving the agreement, signify by saying I. I, those both say. So since the resolution leader will call, we, we approved it by. Motion second approved.
Washington with the resolution for health and safety measures for twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Hey, motion for a brent again to fill the resolution.
Okay.
Second resolution again. Any discussion, the reason we're doing this over is we needed a roll call. So we have a motion in a second. Resolution, any more discussion? Discussion, Greg, I have your resolve. I'm. Brittany.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Resolution here. Okay, we're done with business items. Upcoming meetings, it's going to be. Yeah, sir, I've still got a few questions here that I want answered. You guys are elected officials or paid for by taxidermy, there's answers. I've got five cases in the district who we pulled last year. For certain reasons. With this whole health mandate or. Plans. If this changes, are the parents going to have input on this or is there something? That would be made by the board causes. That's typically made by the COVID team. It consists of part of the board staff. Will parents have any input on that or will it not? Welcome to reach out to the board member. Given like masks, etc., recommended. That's what it will be like in the end this year. What is this going to look like on the first day of school? I guess it's going to school, it's a mask recommended. What is? It's being recommended.
Is it wearing or not?
Right, so what we're saying is it's recommended that. That students have a choice to wear. We will not be saying you have to have a mask on when you walk in the building. A mask mandate would be, you need to have a mask. Like for example, the bus, that's a mandate. Yeah. So if this changes, is that something? If you guys meet tomorrow and say, hey, we'll. Is that something that's. How much damage is with masks? I'll be pointing to that as well that I agree with this. And if it comes to that, it will. We won't school from last year. We're in the sense of sure him. That's why. So what was your, what was your question? If this changes, if you guys meet tomorrow and say masks are mandated. Yep. The parents give for a warning on that or how it comes out. Are given an official question. So our COVID team meets each week, so we usually meet on Thursdays. Now that could change because we could have an increase in positive cases. Discussion. When we have that meeting, we invite others to apply public health officials to join us. To help give us a recommendation on what we should be doing. We use health officials to help us, help guide us. All we would communicate is, I believe it's your other question. Then what we would do is we would communicate through instant email. That would be the quickest way if we would have a change. I think last year, I believe we were going to give a couple of dates before we made the change in learning model. Right now, we're going to in-person. That's what we feel is the best for kids for teaching and learning for our teachers and students. What we're trying to do is, how can we be here? That's what we're trying to do. And try and make this a good experience for kids and teachers. It's very stressful on, on both. And families. Just clarified, mandated on the bus, recommended in schools. In children. On the bus.
That's a federal mandate on the bus. What's that?
It's all public transportation.
Like to go back to our, you know, we're going to be watching the. Positive cases in our community, in our county. In our building with staff and students. And we'll be doing that daily. Our COVID coordinators will be doing that daily.
What type of time frame will we have if it changed? Without changing implemented. I too have some reservations as a parent. And I'm very thankful, respectful for everyone who's. Worth the efforts or kids who went to school. I do think it's the most important. But I too have reservations about the young child being required to wear a mask. So if for me, that would cause conflict in, in my decision to keep my kid in school, even though I think that that is the best case scenario. Would I have the option as a parent to say, I want to stay in the school in Pelican because my kid loves the teacher and we want to stay a part of the community? We want to refer that, but I don't want my kid to be forced to wear a mask. So then could my child then be still within the Pelican district, but school at home like last year? Would that be an option should we come to that?
Then okay for the parents. So then we're going back to like what I talked about in the plan is that the parents would contact the building principal to make those arrangements. Because what we're hoping is things are short-term. That's what our hope is. And that's our goal for clarification. We want our kid in the district. But for you to shut us down and say we have a chance to talk, that's my note. That was bad, just we weren't, in my opinion. And typically, we don't allow this, but. Well, we're worried about this is. Different times for all, because I understand that. But you want our kids in the district if possible, but. For the age markets, we don't already make a call, we imagine a mask. I respect people that choose that and what I would use.
For my own information, I'm, I'm a new to the school. My son will be in first grade this year, so I've never attended a meeting. I don't know the format. So is that typically how it is ran? That the only time we have the option to speak is in the beginning where their topics have yet to cover. So how are we to gather information prior to, so that we can speak? Beginning when we're given the opportunity. I, I had no, no questions or I had things on my mind, but I, I wanted to obviously be educated first before I spoke.
Most materials are. Prior to. With the agenda.
Okay.
So that's there. But what's discussed here is not put on the, I mean, obviously there's like a poor discussion. It's not there, we have no way to know what you guys' opinions all that. Yeah, it'd be a little format like this, but it doesn't have all your discussion. So from our standpoint, that's not exactly.
I, I'd like to just add my perspective. I'm glad you guys are here. I don't remember the last time there was one taxpayer that visited the meeting. And. I, I, I'm not speaking for every board member here, but we would much rather. Have an uncomfortable conversation or a comfortable conversation in person. And if procedurally, it just gets awkward at times. I think, I can, like I said, not speaking for everybody. Our goal is to try to communicate as well as we can and to have an open dialogue with every taxpayer, regardless of whether or not they have a student here or not. But from a protocol standpoint, it seems kind of harsh. But it's very similar to any public meeting, whether it's a city council meeting or a hotel commission meeting. It's usually just a public input period, but at the same time. I know our board, most boards around the region, we're not here to not listen. And it makes sense to us to have this dialogue. So I hope, I hope you don't feel that. There's some sort of plan in place to try to prohibit parents or any taxpayers from having input because that's not the case. And I, I was hoping there'd be more folks at every meeting. You know, even when we did everything electronically, there might be two people that watched. And, and for, for us. You know. We're elected, but not each of you elected us. You may have elected some of us, but we, we want that engagement. We really, really encourage the engagement. Regardless of whether or not there's an agreement or disagreement. Because I think part of our, anybody's frustration, me as a human being is feeling like I haven't been hurt. And I think everybody in this district has ample to opportunity to be heard. Now to address your question, you know, the earlier the better. Let's say that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chairman Chomps. But if a parent or any taxpayer payer wants to be on the agenda with regard to a particular item. What do they need to do in order to, do they call ahead? Is that some, is that, do they have an opportunity to be put in that situation so they're not limited just to the. Introduction part of the meeting?
District office.
Yeah.
So, and a lot of it might just fall under the first category as a district to succeed. And then at the end of. A lot of districts will keep it to like a three-minute comment period because you could be here all night to be one of those people, so.
And technically, we're not, we're not obligated in any capacity to respond to any citizens' comments unless it's specifically on the agenda. But we don't want to do that. We, we want to hear from everybody as much as we possibly can. In an effort to, you know, make sure that, hey, if there, there's things that we want to create them. We want to be heard and we want to hear you folks. And then, I, like I said, I don't speak on behalf, but I think that's a pretty fair assessment based on my experience with my fellow. So we appreciate your opinion here first and foremost.
Did we answer your question?
Yes. I just want to add that we try to give you ample time, but you have to keep in mind as well that especially in the elementary school, we happen to have a positive case or required to take out. That class and there you won't have notice necessarily. And then, you know, you're looking at the two weeks or whatever. Sure, but then everybody's in the same boat. It's not like me taking my kid out and everybody else like keeps on going, you know, or if. In the most unfortunate circumstances, if I felt like I was forced to make a decision to where I draw my kid from the, the school district. I, it's not something that you can make a decision or drop the hat. So as a parent, you want to try to be as prepared as possible. I mean, nobody knows what's going to happen tomorrow, a week from now, two months from now. You know, I think most parents are just here trying to get information and we want to be respectful of you. Just hard to ask questions and speak to things when we have. Heard a lot of content, so thank you for listening.
Coming meetings, September twentieth, regular meetings, October fourth, we have a work session. October eighteen, we have a regular meeting again. Anybody welcome to stick around with the staff, we can plan, so. That makes sense. I'll entertain, motion to adjourn. You have a second? Like my Greg?
No, just kidding. Uh, awesome, I'll second. See, we're going to discuss. After the meeting.
I'm sorry, planning.
All of us? All right, let's stay in, let's stay in meeting. And if, if we're all going to be involved in discussion, yes.
Yeah, so everybody's welcome to stick around.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was a motion to adjourn meeting.
Was. We can. Stay, we'll stay in meeting as well. Everybody can stay here, listen to us on TV and order chips.
It's hard to hear back here. Are you adjourned?
No.
Okay.
So we have a motion in a second, should we?
I rescind my motion.
Maybe we have a. You rescind, three seconds. Any discussion on rescinding? There is no discussion, all those in favor of approving, rescinding the motion, take it by saying I. Right, those both saying, David, we're still in meeting. Chips. Of napkins. So what do we need?
For napkins and. Take a place.
Place.
Last meeting. Started some problems.
I'll just save what I have. Barbecue sauce. Pasta salad, bars. Pickles. Am I right? Figure out. I've got the quotes ready.
Pick a water.
You want to say water? I didn't. Water? Water.
Water, what else, whatever's left in my.
I do whatever.
I'll just check whatever's left after. I thought I'll pick up the balance of that. Water. Any other beverages? Other than water?
I think we just figured water. Some people brought up those flavors.
I'll get a flavor pouches, water.
We're going to have water.
Yep. I have the number one hundred written down. Just to plan.
Yeah. All seven. Seven, twenty-four packs.
Have a note that Derek wanted beans. Or someone wanted beans. He wanted summer fresh pasta stuff.
That was me.
Yes.
Want a summer fresh? Yes. That was a recommendation.
So I have that ordered, but beans are written down, but I haven't done anything with it. Or do we have enough?
We told you guys about beans.
Thank you. It's bloodless roaster. I went up to.
Say beans, yeah.
Okay. And I have a roaster. The six of us.
Okay.
So if you want to just only owe people, I can take it. I know they can't afford you.
You need to know what we can start. Now back to the first.
It was requested special papers.
There's something I should. Last minute. We need to put this on a Google Doc so we can see it.
Yeah.
Make sure we have everything.
And then hard on paper, so anybody, what? I have my list of what I'm doing. Got mine. What was on your list, Ken?
Anything else we can do? I need to return, there's nothing else. Great. Second adjourn. One second. Any discussion on adjourn? There are no discussion, all those in favor of adjourn, say in front of us, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those both saying, we're adjourned.